House Bill 9675, mandating the LGUs to establish, maintain and operate handdog na oportunidad para sa edukasyon centers, by Representative Copilar.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 9676, providing an additional ground for canceling the certificate of candidacy of a nuisance candidate and making the acts of a nuisance candidate an election offense, by Representative Copilar.
To the Committee on Software and Electoral Reform.
House Bill 9677, providing for the conduct of national and local elections within the premises of shopping malls, by Representative Copilar.
To the Committee on Software and Electoral Reform.
House Bill 9678, providing for diaper changing stations in all major establishments and government offices, by Representative Copilar.
To the Committee on Welfare of Children.
House Bill 9679, creating an economic zone to establish an anchor industry in Everly legislative district, by Representative Yap Christiantel.
To the Committee on Economic Affairs and the Committee on Trade and Industry.
House Bill 9680, establishing the Bukidnon State University College of Medicine in Bukidnon State University main campus in Malai Balai city Bukidnon, by Representatives Flores, Alba, Subiri and Roque.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 9681, establishing a multi-species freshwater and marine hatchery in Pangasinan, Gingoog City, Misamis Oriental, by Representative Unabia.
To the Committee on Aquaculture and Fisheries Resources.
Messages from the Senate. Messages dated December 6, 2023 informing the House that on even date the Senate approved the Conference Committee report of the Bi-Camera Conference Committee on the disagreeing provisions of Senate Bill 2001 and House Bill 6510 and Senate Bill 2028 and House Bill 7535.
To the Committee on Rules.
Communications. Letter dated November 23, 2023 of the BSP Acting Back Officer 6 Office of the General Counsel and Legal Services transmitting to the House of Representatives a duly certified copy of circular letter number CL 2023064 dated 25 October 2023.
To the Committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries.
Report dated December 6, 2023 of Honorable House Secretary General on enrolled copies of the consolidated version of House Bill 4125 and Senate Bill 2224 which were transmitted at Office of the President for his excellency's consideration and signature pursuant to Section 8 in H. Rule 6 of the Rules of the House. Letter dated November 28, 2023 of the Office of the President, Malakanyang Executive Secretary, transmitting two original copies of RA 11965 which was signed by the President.
To the Archives.
Committee Report. Committee Report Number 906 submitted by the Committee on Youth and Sports Development on House Resolution 1505. Committee Report Number 907 submitted by the Committee on Higher and Technical Education on House Resolution 1509.
To the Committee on Rules. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, before you proceed with the reference of business, may I request that the guest of the Honorable Romanti Romulo be recognized. They are the guests from the Sacred Heart Academy of Pasig City. They are: Akuin Gabriel Rafael, Antonio Franco Lorenzo, Bokin Amaya Mauricio Gabriel, Degusman Daniel David, Bautista Samara Ann Severino, Bonifacio Samantha Villuan, Kamungol Cassandra Esther Reyes, Magzino Carmela Quinga, Ramos Maria Isabella Ramirez, Romero Andrea Dominic Yapitan, Rosales Rajya Kaliksta Papalad, Senyo Florence Micaela Grace De Vera, Alvarez Akim Enrico, Masia Francis Bennett Paolan, Navato Sakri Isaak Alinea, Santos Obadia Ruwaring, Tomeldan Lebron Paul, Adel Adrienne Jacinto, Melicor Ignasi Angela, Pamaran Sofia Angela Ronyo, Ragantak Maria Elise David, Tabaquero Jenny Joy Santos, Tarik Naomi Anne Gray, Uy Cristabel Adrian Kabiting, Vargas Alegría Manalo, Berry Alisa Marie, Patenyo Maria Jeline, Peña Don Marc and Moreno John Marl D.
Welcome to the People's House.
Mr. Speaker, may I also request the recognition of the visitors of Congressman Felimon M. Espares of the Coop Natco Party List. They are the members of the Federation of Cebu Transport Cooperative Officers and Transport Leaders. They are: Ellen McNahoy, the Chairperson, Macario Quevedo, Janice Benlot, Elsie Montebon, Roberto Aurelia, Wilfredo Aurelia, Dennis Fabula, Priscilla Cabonita, Christine Dino, Kristen Lailani Cabonita, Loreto Harris Jr., Ben H. Florentino, Mayla Juanita Valderama, Hilario Morpicio Jr., Waldem M. Inot, Maxel P. Samalino, Carolyn Casane, Marlo Recla, Achilino Huyo A., Grenobi A. Acebes, Jose C. Melomida and Julierto N. Flores.
To the visitors of the Honorable Espares, welcome. Welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we suspend session for a few minutes.
Session suspended.
Can I sit?
Yes.
Let's go. Come on. Come here.
I'm alone.
Additional, yes, sir. Thank you.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we take additional reference of business and that the Secretary General be directed to read the titles of the committee reports for referral to the Committee on Rules.
The Secretary General is directed to do so. Please proceed.
Additional reference of business. Committee Reports. Committee Report Number 908 submitted by the Committee on Justice and the Committee on National Defense and Security on House Concurrent Resolution Number 19. Committee Report Number 909 submitted by the Committee on Justice and the Committee on National Defense and Security on House Concurrent Resolution Number 20. Committee Report Number 910 submitted by the Committee on Justice and the Committee on National Defense and Security on House Concurrent Resolution Number 21. And Committee Report Number 911 submitted by the Committee on Justice and the Committee on National Defense and Security on House Concurrent Resolution Number 22.
To the Committee on Rules.
Mr. Speaker, I move that you suspend session for a few minutes.
Session suspended.
House Bill 9675, mandating the LGUs to establish, maintain and operate handdog na oportunidad para sa edukasyon centers, by Representative Copilar.
Di ko pa. O, sige niya.
Session is resumed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, under the calendar of business for the day, I move that we consider House Bill Number 9571 contained in Committee Report 860 under the Committee on Public Order and Safety and request that the Secretary General read the title of the measure.
Secretary General is directed. Please proceed.
House Bill Number 9571, an act prohibiting the development, production, stockpiling, and use of chemical weapons providing for their destruction and imposing penalties for violations thereof.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? Chair here stand. Motion's approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Dan Fernandez of the Lone District of Santa Rosa City to sponsor the measure.
Is there any objection? Chair here stand. Motion's approved. The Honorable Fernandez is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Majority Floor Leader. Mr. Speaker, I have the honor to sponsor Committee Report Number 860 on House Bill Number 9571 entitled "An Act Prohibiting the Development, Production, Stockpiling, and Use of Chemical Weapons Providing for Their Destruction and Imposing Penalties for Violations Therefore." The Philippines, as a signatory to the Chemical Weapons Convention, has engaged all departments of its government from the executive, the legislative, the judiciary in the active implementation of some of the provisions of the CWC. However, the country has not yet fully adopted a measure that will completely comply with the CWC. We personally commit ourselves towards the realization of this collective aspiration to enact a substantive, comprehensive, and omnibus law that will make us fully realize our responsibilities under the CWC, which is to protect our people and aspire to eliminate all chemical weapons and abuses involved in the use of chemicals. The measure seeks to provide an enabling law required to fulfill the Philippine government's international commitments and obligations under the Chemical Weapons Convention to which the country is a signatory in 1993. These are the following key provisions of the measure aras palos: Designates the Anti-Terrorism Council as a Philippine national authority on the Chemical Weapons Convention to be headed by the Executive Secretary as chairperson of the ATC. Identifies the duties and functions of the PNA CWC. Empowers the PNA CWC to compel assistance and support from all departments, bureaus, offices, agencies, or instrumentalities of the government, including government-owned and controlled corporations. Empowers the PNA CWC to periodically update the scheduled chemicals listed in Schedule I, Schedule II, and Schedule III of the Annex on Chemical Weapons to the CWC. Prohibits the following acts: One, to develop, produce, otherwise acquire, stockpile, or retain any chemical weapons; Two, to transfer directly, indirectly, chemical weapon to persons; Three, to use chemical weapons; Four, to engage in any military preparation to use a chemical weapon; Five, to assist, encourage, or induce any way a person to engage in any activity prohibited to a state party under the convention; Six, to use a riot control agent as a method of warfare; and lastly, to produce, acquire, retain, or use Schedule I chemicals outside the Philippines except to a person in another state party to the convention or for research, medical, pharmaceutical, or protective purposes. Provides penalties and sanctions for criminal and administrative violations committed by officers of partnerships, corporations, associations, and other judicial entities, government officials and employees, and foreign nationals. Mandates that any chemical weapon subject of the offense, the fruits and proceeds, and such other instrument related thereto shall be perpetrated in favor of the government and that the cause of destruction or disposal shall be borne by the erring individual or entity. Provides the mechanism for the declaration, verification, and inspection of toxic materials, chemicals, and their precursors. Protects the confidentiality of information that is given or obtained under this act and provides that the same shall be disclosed only for the purposes of complying with the obligations under the convention, the enforcement of this act. Establishes the terms and conditions on international legal cooperation and assistance. Mandates and the provision of this act shall be supple- supplementary to the provision of the revised Penal Code Anti-Terrorism Act of 2020 and other laws. And lastly, provides the regional trial courts shall have jurisdiction over all cases of violations of this act. Let us approve House Bill Number 9571. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, my dear colleagues.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no other member who wishes to interpolate, I move that we terminate the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? Chair here stand. Motion's approved.
Mr. Speaker-
Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Congressman.
The Honorable Rodriguez of Cagayan de Oro is recognized.
I rise, Mr. Speaker, to be able to ask questions to the honorable sponsor, the Chairman of the Committee on Public Order, the debonair Congressman, Danny Fernandez. Is he willing to accept my questions?
Yes, willingly, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, we are talking now about the Convention on the Prohibition of Chemical Weapons, Development, Production, and Stockpiling of Chemical Weapons.
With the permission of the gentleman from Cagayan de Oro, Majority Leader, please proceed.
Before we proceed, Mr. Speaker, I would like to withdraw my previous motion.
Is there any objection? Chair here stand. Motion's approved. We now proceed with the period of interpolation. Again, the honorable gentleman from Cagayan de Oro is recognized to continue with this interpolation. Please proceed.
Thank you. Would the honorable sponsor agree to some interventions from this representation?
Yes, yes, willingly, Mr. Speaker. Sorry.
Honorable sponsor, we are talking about the Convention on the Prohibition of the Development, Production, Stockpiling, and Use of Chemical Weapons. Because of this convention, Mr. Speaker, an organization was established called the Organization for the Prohibition of Chemical Weapons. Is the author aware of this organization?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, there will be the national focal entity that will deal with all the chemical weapon construction, stockpiling, and all of these things will be under the OPCW.
We are referring to the Organization for the Prohibition of Chemical Weapons in Den Haag, the Netherlands.
Yes, correct, correct, Mr. Speaker.
Are you stating that there is also a counterpart or a branch office of the Organization for the Prohibition of Chemical Weapons here in the Philippines?
Yes, the Executive Secretary of the national government will be handling this interaction with the OPCW, which is based on the Hague, Netherlands.
So where is, what is the office called for the Philippines?
Under the Executive Secretary. We call this OPCW ATC, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Speaker. Under the Office of the Executive Secretary. We will be calling this national authority Anti-Terrorism Council, which will be under the Office of the Executive Secretary, PNA CWC.
And is this already an established organization already? Or will it be established by this bill?
Since we have created already the Anti-Terrorism Council, thereby, upon approval of this House Bill Number 9571, automatically, the PNA CWC will be our focal person with the OPCW in the Hague, Netherlands.
Thank you very much. We will now have an office here, and this bill precisely would support if there are chemical weapons being established here. We have the Executive Secretary and the Anti-Terrorism Council to be able to make sure that the development and production of these chemical weapons will be brought to the proper agency to be able to prosecute under the Convention. Now, of course, in Den Haag, we have the Organization for the Prohibition of Chemical Weapons, and their headquarters are located there. I have a chance, Mr. Speaker, to visit this office in the Hague, Netherlands. And precisely, this particular office makes sure that all over the world all chemical weapons will be destroyed. Is that correct, Mr. Sponsor, Mr. Speaker?
That is correct. As a matter of fact, Mr. Chairman, ah, Mr. Speaker, we have established a lot of OPCW already around the world. And I think per region, or they clustered it in so many regions that I believe there is already around eight OPCW that was already constructed by the OPCW main office in Netherlands.
The sponsor has a full grasp of this particular subject matter, and I really would congratulate him that there are now many organizations' offices that would now implement the Convention and be able to go to the organization. Now, of course, the sponsor would know the name of the hall, the main hall of the Organization for the Prohibition of Chemical Weapons in the Netherlands.
What do you mean by main hall?
The name of the hall, because it's very historical. The name of the hall of the the headquarters of the Organization for the Prohibition of Chemical Weapons. Would you, would you be able to know, Mr. Speaker?
Are you talking about the OPCW that is based in Hague?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, yes, yes. I've been there, and we were able to see the-
And you would remember, of course, that, Mr. Speaker, the main hall is-
Yes, the main building is located in the outskirts of the Hague, which is, I think, just a few hours away from the ICC.
That's correct. And the name, Mr. Speaker, of the hall is Eper Hall.
That's correct, that's-
And you would know the meaning, why you used the Eper Hall to be the name of the main hall of the Office of the Organization for the Prohibition of Chemical Weapons, Mr. Speaker.
Please educate me on that issue, Mr. Chairman.
Eper, Mr. Chairman, was where the first chemical weapons were used by the Germans
Oh, yeah.
against the British and the French. That was in the year 1917 at the onset of the war in Eper, in Flanders, in Flanders, Belgium. And so, Eper Hall is now the name of the hall because it was in Eper, in Belgium, in Flanders, that the first chemical weapon was used. And in this chemical weapon that was used in 1917, Mr. Speaker, we have the first use, and many British and French soldiers were hit by these chemical weapons and died. And that is why, because of the war in Epers, we have the poem "In Flanders Fields." Of course, the Honorable gentleman would know the poem "In Flanders Fields."
Mr. Chairman, the one that you're talking about, about the weapons of destruction that was being kept in the OPCW, as a matter of fact, I have seen those weapons, no? And precisely, you are correct. Now, I remember that issue that you are talking about, but not another issue that you're trying to imply on this, on this honorable august body. I'm sorry, Mr. Speaker, medyo hindi ko po nasakyan 'yung issue 'yan.
Well, the poem of "In Flanders Fields" became the most important poem during the First World War. And it says that, "In Flanders Fields, the puppies blow, Within the crosses, row by row, That mark my grave. And up above, the skyrack sings, Never heard amidst the noise below." So, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Speaker, "In Flanders Fields" is a great poem that everybody knew in the 1980s, 1917s and 1918s because it talks about the war where chemical weapons were used. "In Flanders Fields, the puppies blow, Within the crosses, row by row, That mark my grave. And in the sky, the skyrack sings, Never heard amidst the noise below." The war, the noise of this, all of these bombs and these particular chemical weapons. So it really, I'm very happy that our dear colleague has sponsored this because we want to support him. And it gives me the memories of Eper Hall in the Organization for the Prohibition of Chemical Weapons and the poem, the greatest poem, "In Flanders Fields, the puppies blow." So, Mr. Chairman, I thank you and I support, fully support that we in the Philippines will be able to support this bill as being, you know, sponsored by the great, our great public order chairman and now the champion against chemical weapons no other than Congressman Chairman Danny Fernandez. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for that wonderful, ano, ano, for wonderful information that you just have given to this representation. And indeed, you have given me additional knowledge to make me more active in this fight against the production of chemical weapon in the whole world. Precisely the reason why we are, we want to be compliant with the international standard is to save the humanity. Not only our humanity is being saved in here, but the environmental impact of this chemical weapons production. So marami-marami po salamat ang aking pong idolo, Congressman Rupes Rodriguez. Thank you for that wonderful interpolation. I submit, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no other member who wishes to interpolate, I move that we terminate the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? Chair here stand. Motion's approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection to the motion? There being none, motion's approved. Please proceed.
Mr. Speaker, there being no further committee nor individual amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? Chair here stand. Motion's approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading on House Bill Number 9571.
Is there any objection? Chair here stand. Motion's approved. Those in support of House Bill 901, is that correct?
9571.
9571, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, please say nay. The ayes have it.
Mr. Speaker, I move for consideration on second reading on House Bill Number 9277 contained in Committee Report 770. contained in Committee Report 770, under the Committee on Ways and Means, and request the Secretary General to read the title of the measure.
The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the measure. Please proceed.
House Bill Number 9277, Anak instituting reforms to enhance the efficiency and dynamism of the Philippine capital markets, amending for the purpose Sections 22, 24, 25, 121, 127, and 190 of Republicak Number 8424, otherwise known as the National Internal Revenue Code of 1997, as amended.
Tapos ka na? Oh, sige.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? Chair here stand, motion's approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Chairperson of the Committee on Ways and Means, the Honorable Joey Salceda, as well as the Honorable Jervil Luistro.
The Honorable Salceda is recognized to sponsor-
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Honorable Speaker, esteemed colleagues, good afternoon. The Committee on Ways and Means has the privilege of sponsoring House Bill 9277, under Committee Report 770, or the Capital Markets Efficiency Promotion Act. House Bill Number 9277 aims to create an inclusive investment climate that will benefit ordinary Filipinos. Contrary to impressions that the capital markets or equities are only for the rich, most of us are exposed to the stock market, one way or another, through the SSS, GSIS, and Phil Health, which invests in stocks. The stock market is one of the best ways for reputable companies to raise cheap capital, to create jobs for Filipinos. However, companies in our social protection systems suffer from a stagnant stock market, primarily due to high tax rates. This discourages the rise of new companies that can create value for the economy. Our numbers do not lie. While total collection of passive income rose to 137.3 billion in 2022, transactions on listed shares of stock amounted to only 9.2 billion. The 0.6% stock transaction tax is the highest in the ASEAN region. Vietnam and Indonesia only impose 0.1%, while other neighboring countries totally exempt the sale, a tax on the sale of shares of stock. In terms of equity market indicators, the Philippines ranked the lowest among the six ASEAN countries based on the amount of capital raised through the stock market. There are 283 companies listed in the Philippine Stock Exchange in 2022, while stock exchanges in the region have 425, at least up to 963 listed companies. We also impose the highest dividend tax rate at 25%, while the average in the ASEAN is just 8.4%. To be at par with our regional peers, this measure will harmonize cash and property dividend tax rate by reducing the current 25% to 10%, which was actually in the original PIPITA. Lower dividend tax rates can encourage cross-border investments and participation in the local capital market by non-resident investors. This increased participation can lead to improved liquidity, depth, and breadth, and efficiency of the capital markets. Lastly, this proposal will also support the Philippine Charities Webstake, which currently funds the universal healthcare program in our Malasakit Center. In 2018, our train law doubled the documentary stamp tax on Lotto tickets from 10 cents to 20 cents. PCSO has proven that this translated to lower Lotto ticket sales, hence severely affecting its charity fund, limiting its capacity to fund priority health program, especially for individual medical assistance. To rectify, to rectify this, House Bill Number 9277 lowers the final tax rate for PCSO and Lotto winnings from 20% to 10% or to its original, and reduces the DST on ticket cost on PCSO Lotto from 20 cents to 10 cent tabos. With its goals of enabling the inflow of capital resources by lowering the tax rates or the friction costs, optimizing the allocation of capital and funding our health and social welfare programs, we ask our leadership and our colleagues to help us pass this measure. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to recognize the Honorable Jervil Luistro of the Second District of Batangas to also sponsor the measure.
The Honorable Luistro from the Second District of Batangas is recognized to sponsor the measure as well, to co-sponsor the measure. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Honorable Speaker, and my esteemed colleagues, good afternoon. House Bill Number 770 aims to democratize, or make more accessible, capital investments by reducing the stock transaction tax from 6 tenths of 1% to 1 tenth of 1%. The remaining tax is just so we could monitor the transactions. Secondly, the bill aims to lower the dividend tax on non-resident aliens from 25% to 10%, harmonizing thereby the cash and property dividends rate, and allowing more people to participate in the capital market. Most importantly, the measure aims to empower the Philippine Charities Webstake's office to help our constituents by decreasing the final tax on Philippine Charities Webstake's office and Lotto winnings from 20% to 10%, and lessening as well the documentary stamp tax on PCSO ticket cost from 20% to 10%. In this time of recovery, Mr. Speaker, esteemed colleagues, we need more money to move in the market, to enable higher investments. We hope that Congress, under the leadership of Speaker Fredinand Martin Romualdes, and our Chairperson, the Honorable Joey Sartes Salceda, can use taxation to encourage productive endeavors. Thank you, your honors.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to suspend consideration on House Bill 9277.
Is there any objection? Chair here stand, motion's approved. House Bill 9-
277.
27 is suspended, consideration of House Bill 9277 is suspended. Please proceed.
Mr. Speaker, I move to recognize the guest of the Honorable Bienvenido Abante of the Sixth District of Manila, Reverend Dave Bulka and wife Kathy from the First Baptist Church of Cadwell.
Welcome to the House of Representatives. Please proceed, Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I would like to also acknowledge the guests of the Honorable Rosemarie Conejos Panotes of the Second District of Camerines Norte, from the municipality of Talisay, Camerines Norte. Firstly, Mayor Donovan Mansenido, Ronaldo Serano, Jijun Mago, Ruel Regondola, Joseph Encinas, Alfonso Corpus, Rolando Urbana, Hermineo Norte Junior, Armin Jalata, Amador Magana, Arnold Aguilar.
Welcome to the House of Representatives.
Mr. Speaker, I would, I move to suspend session for-
Session suspended. Session is resumed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, today being a Monday, and pursuant to our rules, I move that we open the privilege hour.
Is there any objection? Chair here stand, motion's approved. The privilege hour is, uh, is open. Please proceed.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Representative Jervil Jinky Beatriz R. Luistro of the Second District of Batangas to avail of the privilege hour.
The Honorable Luistro is recognized to avail of the privilege hour. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, esteemed colleagues, and respected members of this August chamber. This representation of the six municipalities of Batangas Second District, Pawan, Mapini, San Pasqual, Tinglooy, San Luis, and Lubo, stands before you today, on behalf of the people I represent, and the entire nation, to address a matter of important, at most importance, one that strikes at the core of our nation's future, the alarming and persistent decline in the academic performance of our students, as revealed by the latest program for International Student Assessment, or PISA, study. As we assess the data presented in the 2022 PISA study, it is disheartening to note that the Philippines continue to lag behind other nations in reading, mathematics, and science. This is not a new revelation, but the stark reality that confronts us and demands urgent attention and decisive action. The report highlights that despite the measures taken by the Department of Education in response to the 2018 PISA results, there has been no significant improvements in the average scores of Filipino students. In fact, our country's performance in this crucial subjects remains not just stagnant, but has regrettably worsened in some aspects. Let this representation draw your attention to the disconcerting statistics. In mathematics, the Philippines rank sixth to the last among 81 countries, scoring an average of 355 points, far below the Organization for Economic Cooperation and Development average, that is 472 points. In reading and science, our standing is equally disheartening, ranking sixth to the last, and third to the last, respectively. These numbers not only reflect a failure to catch up with global standards, but also raise serious concerns about the competencies of our future workforce. As representatives of the people, we cannot ignore the implications of these findings on our nation's progress. Education is the cornerstone of development, and a proficient and knowledgeable citizenry is vital for our competitiveness in the global arena. Let us echo the sentiment, ang kabataan, ang pag-asa ng bayan, emphasizing that our students are not only competing against their peers within our borders, but with those from around the world. This predicament brings to mind the constitutional mandate embedded in Article 14, Section 1 of the 1987 Constitution, which underscores the state's obligation to protect and promote the right of all citizens to quality education at all levels. It is imperative that we hold ourselves accountable to this constitutional provision and strive for the betterment of our educational system. for the betterment of our educational system. The 2022 PISA study also sheds light on the impact of the pandemic and school closures on education systems globally, specifically for fifteen-year-old students. It is evident that the gap between the highest-scoring Filipino students and the weakest learners has narrowed in mathematics, but it has not significantly changed in reading and science. This reality emphasizes the need for targeted interventions and comprehensive reforms to address the diverse challenges our education system faces. In response to the dismal 2018 PISA results, the depped-initiated aggressive reforms, however, the lack of substantial progress indicates that we need to reassess and intensify these efforts. We must prioritize the review and updating of the K-12 curriculum, the improvement of learning facilities, and the upskilling and reskilling of our educators through effective professional development programs. Moreover, we must closely examine the educational practices of high-performing countries in the PISA study, such as Singapore, Macau, Japan, Hong Kong, Chinese Taipei, and Estonia. By understanding and adopting successful strategies from these nations, we can pave the way for the holistic transformation of our education system. In conclusion, the plight of our students in international assessments should serve as a wake-up call for all of us, and we cannot afford to allow our youth to be left behind in the global landscape. It is our duty as representatives of the people to ensure that every child in our nation receives a quality education that equips them for the challenges of the future. Aligned with an unwavering commitment to educational excellence, it brings me great pride to declare that this representation will be initiating the filing of a House resolution entitled "Urging Action to Improve Educational Standards and Performance in Reading, Mathematics, and Science" among all Filipino students. Through this resilient measure, this representation endeavors to serve as a catalyst for positive transformation, creating an environment that not only cultivates the intellectual growth, but also ensures the academic success of each Filipino student. In the spirit of unity, let us join hands in this noble undertaking, collaboratively working to construct a foundation that propels our nation towards prosperity and wisdom. Let us unite in our commitment to revitalize and enhance our educational system. The future of our nation depends on the knowledge and skills of the next generation. Together, let us work towards a Philippines that takes pride in the academic excellence of its students and stands as a beacon of progress in the international community. May we all be guided by our commitment to the well-being and future success of our students. Maraming salamat po.
Thank you. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we refer the speech of the Honorable Jervil Jinky Batrix Luisroff to the Committee on Rules for its appropriate action.
Is there any objection? Chair here stands. Motion is approved. Please proceed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Raoul Manuel of the Kabataan Partilis to avail of the privilege hour.
The Honorable Manuel is recognized to avail of the privilege hour.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Nais po nating ipabatid sa kapulungan na ito at sa publiko na kaninang umaga lamang, may nagtipon na namang mga kababayan nating tyoper at operator upang ianunsyo na magsasagawa sila ng protesta at tigilpasada simula December fourteen bilang pagtulak sa Marcos Junior Administration na tanggalin ang deadline sa franchise consolidation na mangyayari sa December thirty-one, twenty-twenty-three. O di kaya tuluyang mabasura na ang kontramahirap na PUV modernization program? Tama po ang narinig natin. Meron na namang mga magtitigilpasada. Marahil sa mga kapako kabataan na makakarinig nito, mapapaisip sila na sa gitna ng exams at requirements, bakit dadagdag na namang ito? Pero kung tutuusin, maaaring din nating tanungin, bakit may mga tyoper na handa na namang isakripisyo ang kita nila na makukuha sana sa pagpasada para lumahok sa isa na namang protesta? Di ba ang sabi ng pamahalaan wala ng mangyayaring face-out na mga Jeep? Pero para maunawaan natin kung bakit hindi tumitigil ang ating mga driver at operator at bakit may pakialam dito ang mga kabataan, may kailangan muna tayong linawin. Una, hindi totoo na wala ng face-out. Oo, sabi na LTFRB ay maaaring pumasada pa rin ang lumang modelo ng Jeep, basta raw consolidated na ang franchise. Pero kung hindi, hindi pa rin ito makakabiyahe. Parang simpleng pagpoproceso lang ba ito ng papeles? Ang sagot, hindi po. Liban sa mahal din ang gastusin para sa mga modern Jeepney units, mataas din ang gastusin para mismo sa franchise consolidation. Ayon sa pag-aaral ng Institute for Nationalist Studies, nasa three hundred thousand pesos ang registration fee ng kooperatiba na bubuin mula sa consolidation, habang nasa twenty thousand pesos ang additional payment per unit na ipapasok sa kooperatiba. Dahil fifteen units ang kailangan para sa consolidated na kooperatiba, at nandyan ang magiging minimum na six hundred thousand pesos, eh di mataas ang kailangang bunuin na mga tyoper para dito. Kung di nila isusuko ang kanilang prangkisa sa malalaking negosyo na kayang magbayad ng ganito kataas na halaga. Ang lumalabas, sapilitang pagpapasuko ito na mga prangkisa ng maliitang driver at tyoper o operator sa mga malalaking negosyo. At kapag nangyari ito, bihag na ng interes ng malalaking kompanya ang kabuhayan nila. Problema ito dahil ang usapin ay ang prangkisa mismo, hindi lang ang deadline. Ang prangkisa ang nagbibigay karapatan na pumasada ang Jeep, at kung walang prangkisa, sa katunayan, walang halaga ang Jeep sa kabuhayan na mga tyoper at operator. Kaya, panatilihin man pansamantala ng LTFRB ang mga lumang Jeep sa kalsada bilang pampalubag loob sa publikong umaalma sa modernization program. Ang katotohanan ay sa ilalim ng franchise consolidation, may nakaambang face-out pa rin. Face-out ng kabuhayan, face-out ng pampublikong katangian ng serbisyong pangtransport. Batay nga sa ilang mga Jeep driver at operator na ating nakonsulta, bagamat makakabiyahe sila by January one, twenty-twenty-four, pero kung sa kanila namang kooperatiba o kompanya, eh ang kalakha ng mga unit ay mga modern Jeepney. Darating din daw ang panahon at nangangamba sila na papatigilin din sila sa pamamasada para mag-give way sa puro mga modern Jeep na lamang sa kanilang kinapaloobang kooperatiba o kompanya. Bibigyang daan ng gobyerno sa patakaran na ito ang layunin ng malalaking negosyo na agawin ang prangkisa at ang kabuhayan ng maralitang tyoper. Samantala, gagawing kalakal na bakal na lamang ang libo-libong mga Jeep. Pangalawa, hindi rin totoo na gaganda ang kabuhayan na mga driver at ang pampublikong transportasyon mismo kapag consolidated na ang mga prangkisa. Marami na tayo natatanggap ng mga ulat tungkol sa palpak na makina at parte na mga electronic Jeep. Pero ang mas nakababahala ay epekto nito sa mga tyoper. Kung di tayo agad na makapaniwala na ito ay sapat na batayan para ibasura ang PUV modernization program, kung ang ating magiging batayan ay ang babala ng mga asosasyon ng tyoper, eh di mas magiging kapanipaniwala ang panawagan batay sa karanasan ng mga naging biktima na mismo. Kasabay sa nag-anunsyo ng tigilpasada kanina, si Romel Odevillas ng Rutang Guadalupe FDI, isa sa mga asosasyon na unang nagpaconsolidate noong twenty-nineteen pa. Wala naman daw silang pera para makapagbayad para sa consolidation. Kaya nilapitan sila ng isang Chinese businessman at inalok na ipasailalim ang kanilang mga prangkisa sa kanyang korporasyon. Sa naging memorandum of agreement, inalok sila ng sahod na eight hundred pesos per day para sa mga operator at seven hundred pesos per day para naman sa mga tyoper, kapalit ng kanilang mga prangkisa. Kahit mababa ang bayad, bumayag na rin sila para tumumpad sa programa ng gobyerno. Ngunit nang nagsimula na mag-operate ang modern Jeeps sa ilalim ng kompanya na Wally Bus, at hanggang ngayon, hindi na nasunod ang kasunduan. Kulang daw ang pera ng kompanya, kaya di nababayaran ang mga tyoper. Fifty-seven na units ng Jeep sila lahat, pero thirty units na lang ang tumatakbo ngayon. Nitong setyembre twenty-twenty-one, umapila na sila sa LTFRB na mag-withdraw sa consolidation, pero hanggang ngayon wala pa rin resolusyon sa kanilang reklamo. Kaya ang mensahe nila sa publiko sa naghanap na press conference kanina, huwag na huwag po kayo magconsolidate. Kami ang inyong tingnan. Kami ang inyong panalaminan. Isa lamang po si Manong Romel sa maliliit na operator na nabiktima ng antaymamayang PUV modernization program. Kaya para sa mga tyoper at operator na nakapagconsolidate na at kumakaharap din sa kapareho mga problema, binubukas po natin ang ating opisina sa Kabataan Partilis para sa inyo. Idulog po ninyo sa amin ang inyong mga naging karanasan. Tatagos ang epekto ng PUV modernization program hanggang sa mga commuter kung libo-libong Jeep na hindi nagconsolidate ang pagbabawalan ng pumasada by New Year. Kukulangin tayo ng mga PUV at makikita na naman natin ang mahahabang pila na mga commuter na mahirap or mahihirap ang sumakay. At magiging daan na naman ito para magimportayo ng mga modern Jeep na gawa sa ibang mga bansa. Higit pa rito, Mr. Speaker. Sa pagkakataon naman na mapasakamay na ng iilang negosyo ang mga prangkisa sa bansa, kayang-kaya na nilang takdaan ang presyo ng pamasahe para bumawi sa ginastos nila sa mga modern Jeep at sa consolidation. Imbes na paunla rin, parang lalong nilulugmok ng programang ito ang mamamayan sa krisis sa transportasyon. Kawawa po dito ang mga estudyante at young professional na makakailang sakay, titiisin ang traffic at ang mahahabang pila para lang makapasok sa eskwela o trabaho. Pagbabayaran ang taong bayan ng napakamahal na singil, hindi para sa matinong serbisyo, pero para sa tubo ng iilan. Sa katunayan, hakbang paatras ang ganitong tipo ng modernization. May panahon pa nga dati na tanyag ang industriya ng Jeep sa ating bansa, pero ngayon, ang tinatahak natin ay landas papalayo mula sa industrialization. Gagawing lumpo ang sektor ng transportasyon dahil magiging tali ito sa pag-aangkat ng kagamitan mula sa ibang bansa. At ang makakarating sa atin ay mga pinaglumaan, magiging tambakan tayo. Halimbawa, yang Euro four na siyang standard natin, ito po ay updated na nga sa ibang mga bansa. Scam ang modernization na ito, tulad ng iba pang mga scams sa ating bansa ngayon. Ang Maharlika Investments scam, ang bente pesos na bigas, at iba pang mga pangako at paasa ng malakanyang. Paulit-ulit ang pagdadahilan na pinag-aaralan naman daw ang PUV modernization program. Pero patapos na po ang taon, papalipit na ang deadline, at sa halip na maging masaya dahil magpapasko na, eh lubos ang pangamba na mga driver at operator na maliliit. Kung hanggang ngayon wala pa ring malinaw na pagtataas sa programa, eh di hindi na muna dapat ito ipatupad. Pero bakit nga ba gigil na gigil ang kasalukuyang administrasyon through the Department of Transportation and LTFRB na ipilit ang franchise consolidation sa dulo ng taon? Kung walang matibay na paliwanag, ang lumalabas lang po ay pinoprotektahan ang interes na iilan. Kitilin man ito ang kabuhayan ng kapwa Pilipino. Kaya sa mga kapa natin kabataan, dapat nating maunawaan na ang protesta na mga tyoper at operator ay usapin na ng survival. Buhay sa isang banda o kagutuman at kamatayan sa kabilang banda. Kaya kahit mawalan pa ng ipon ang mga tyoper para sa kanilang notsya buena, tumataya sila sa sama-samang lakas nila at sa suporta natin para ipagtanggol ang kapakanan nila at ang maayos na transportation system para sa ordinaryong mamamayan. Ang protesta nila ay hindi lamang para sa kanilang sariling pangangailangan, pero protesta din ito para sa kinabukasan nating lahat. Payag ba tayo na papabihag tayo sa interes ng dabuhalang mga kompanya sa kadasakay ng Jeep? Yan po ang ating tanong. Kaya huwag nating hayaan na pagkakitaan tayo ng iilang mga dayuhang monopolio at malalaking lokal na negosyo sa walang katapusang bayarin bunga nito at iba pang mga kahalintulad na programa. Ipaglaban po natin ang tunay na kaunlaran sa ating bayan: ibasura ang mandatory franchise consolidation, ibasura ang huwad at hindi makataong PUV modernization program, isulong ang pambansang industrialisasyon tungo sa isang abot kaya, pang masa, at mahusay na sistema ng public transport. Yun lang, Mr. Speaker. Maraming salamat.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we refer the speech of the Honorable Raoul Manuel to the Committee on Rules for its appropriate action.
Is there any objection? Chair here stands. Motion is approved. The privileged speech of the Honorable Manuel is referred to the Rules Committee. Please proceed, Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we suspend the privilege hour.
Is there any objection? Chair here stands. Motion is approved. The privilege hour is suspended. Majority Leader, yes, please proceed.
Mr. Speaker, I would like to recognize the guest of Honorable Representative Peter B. Miguel from Second District of South Cotabato. Our guest came from the Sanguniang Kabataan Federation Officials in Mindanao. We have Honorable Vincent Figueroa, SK Provincial President of South Cotabato and SK National Office Representative of the island of Mindanao. Honorable Alec Adiong, SK Provincial President of the Province of Lanau del Sur. Honorable Kia Ladot, SK Municipal Federation President of Santanino, South Cotabato. Honorable Dave Ho, SK Municipal Federation President of Tampakan, South Cotabato. Honorable Cecil Alsula, SK Municipal Federation President of Norala, South Cotabato. Honorable Cecil Alsula, SK Municipal Federation President of Norala, South Cotobato. Honorable Jimson Sula, SK Municipal Federation President of Lake Sabu, South Cotobato. Honorable Charles Trinidad, SK City Federation President of Coronadal City, South Cotobato. Honorable Nourish Ganda, SK City Federation President of Marawi City. And last but not the least, Ms. Beth Tris, Atenacho Representative of Anetasha Group of Companies.
To the guest of Honorable Peter B. Miguel, Representative of the Second District of South Cotobato, welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, considering that copies of Journal Number 37 dated December 4, 2023, Journal Number 38 dated December 5, 2023, and Journal Number 39 dated December 6, 2023 were already distributed to the members. I move to dispense with the reading of the said journals. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
There is a motion to dispense with the reading of the aforementioned journals. Is there any objection? Chair here stand. The motion is approved. The reading of the said journals is dispensed with. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we approve the aforementioned journals.
Is there any objection? Chair here stand. Motion approved. Journal Number 37 dated December 4, 2023, Journal Number 38 dated December 5, 2023, and Journal Number 39 dated December 6, 2023 are hereby approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for suspension for a few minutes.
Session suspended. Session ifresumed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker.
Please proceed.
May we acknowledge and welcome to the House of Representatives the guests of Honorable Christine Alexi Totor of the Third District of Bohol. We have guests from the Municipality of Duero, Third Legislative District of Bohol. We have the following: Municipal Mayor, Honorable Al Takulad; Mayor Al Takulad's spouse, Mrs. Jennifer Takulad; Executive Assistant for Social Services, Ms. Maria Sulva Huyad; Purchasing Officer, Mr. Dennis Balbin; Liaison Officers, Mr. Bernard Felisilda and Hermogenes Ladores. We have the following barangay captains: Barangay Bagwalog; Mr. Ernesto Besagas; Barangay Alehawan; Irenyo Hamogo; Barangay Sanisidro; Mr. Ronald Galupo; Barangay Emelda; Ms. Ressel Felisilda; Barangay Payaw; Joseph Balatbat; Barangay Anibongan; Ms. Noemi Agire; Barangay Manduasur; Mr. Rodrigo Ed Gilag; Barangay Maduan Norte; Ronald Alderite; Barangay Tay Tay; Mr. Candelario Bago; Barangay Duway; Ms. Lolita Asedo; and Barangay Angilan, Mr. Rodrigo Nalugon Senior.
To the guest of the Honorable Totor of the Third District of Bohol, welcome to the House of Representatives. Thank you for visiting. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to suspend session for a few minutes.
Session suspended.
Thank you for listening to our program. We hope you enjoy it and we will see you again soon.
Session is resumed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, may we recognize the guests of the Honorable Josefine B. Taliado of the First District of Camarines Norte. With us today are the barangay captains of the municipality of Vinzon's and the barangay captains of the municipality of Diet. We have Honorable Jeffrey J. Segundo, Honorable Armida J. Ginto, Honorable Samuel G. Paharilio, Honorable Rosemary J. Abogado, Honorable Felix Rigudon, Honorable Azucena Buen, Honorable Gilbert Avedaño, Honorable Dolores Balane, Honorable Diane R. Perilio, Honorable Gracita Austria, Honorable Ferdinand Quinto, Honorable Marivic Rada, Honorable Celso Mase, Honorable Elisa B. Salen, Honorable Neil Obusan, Honorable Jonah Valeros, Honorable Russell Kada, Honorable Darrell Barrios, Honorable William Villarin, Honorable Milina Arcarilio, Honorable Oliver Vázquez, Honorable Abner Bermundo, Honorable Sonia Bermas, Honorable Nikanor Paliza, Honorable Michelle O'Han, Honorable Rosalie Bermundo, Honorable Oliver Vázquez, Honorable Arthur Barrios, Honorable Ramil Soriano, Honorable Jeffrey Timoner, Honorable Anna Marie Kilala, Honorable Botvinic Mago, Honorable Jose Juan Karanseja Jr., Honorable Arnulfo O'Han, Honorable Illuminado Abordo, Honorable Rainier Morena and Honorable Robert Palencia.
To the guests of Honorable Taliado, First District of Camarines Norte, welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we resume the privilege hour.
Is there any objection? Chair here's sound. Motion's approved. The privilege hour is hereby resumed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Arlene Brosas of the Gabriela Partilis to avail of the privilege hour.
The Honorable Brosas of the Gabriela Partilis is recognized. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, kahapon po ay araw ng karapatang pantao, Mr. Speaker. Dignidad, kalayaan at katarungan para sa lahat. Ito ang mahalagang tema ng paggunitan ng pandaydigang araw ng karapatang pantao. Ngayong taon, ikasampu ng desyembre. Kung kailan minarkahan ang 75 or 75th year anniversary ng Universal Declaration of Human Rights? Pitumpot limang taon na ang UDHR. Malayo na nga ang ating narating, ngunit malayo pa ang dapat nating tahakin. Upang tiyakin na tunay na pantay-pantay at malaya ang bawat Pilipino at mamamayan sa buong daygig. Ang ating paggunta ay ang pagpapatuloy at pagpapalakas ng ating laban para sa hustisia at pananagutan para sa lahat ng biktima ng mga paglabag sa mga karapatang pantao at sa international humanitarian law sa harap ng tumitinding kahirapan at pagsasamantala sa sambayan ng Pilipino. Una, palakasin natin ang laban para sa dignidad sa paggawa at karapatan sa disenteng trabaho, kalusugan at kabuhayan. Marami sa mga kababaihang manggagawa ang gumagampan ng mga elementary occupation na kinakatangian ng mababang kasanayan at mababang pasahod na trabaho. Nasa 55% lamang ang labor force participation rate ng kababaihan at nasa 18 milyong kababaihan naman ang hindi pa rin nabibilang sa labor force. Samantala, umabot na sa 1.2 million ang OFW na ng ibang bansa para magtrabaho noong 2022. Anim kada sampu o 60% naman ng mga OFWs ay kababaihan noong 2021. Sa kabuan, ang mga kababaihan ay kumikita ng mas mababa sa karaniwan. Walang tiyak na trabaho at walang tiyak nakita. Kalakhan sa kanila ay kabilang sa impormal na sektor at walang social protection. Kaya talagang hirap na hirap sa mga gastusin araw-araw. Lalo pang nasadblak ang mga maralita sa vulnerableng kalagayan dahil sa kalagayan ng serbisyon pampubliko. Halimbawa, sa serbisyon pangkalusugan, may dalang panganib sa buhay ng mga kababaihan ang kakulangan ng access sa maayos na serbisyo at pasilidad para sa ligtas na panganganak. Bukod sa kulang ang mga pampublikong ospital, lalo na sa mga malalayong probinsya, hindi ito handa at walang mga kagamitan dahil sa kakulangan ng budget at suporta mula sa pamahalaan. Dulot nito, napipilitan ang mga nanay na pumunta, pumunta pa sa mga pribadong pasilidad kung saan kailangan nilang maglabas ng malaking halaga. Pagdating sa agrikultura, higit na lumalala ang krises dahil sa liberalisasyon, kawalan ng pagmamayari at kontrol sa lupa at kawalan ng suporta ng gobyerno sa lokal na produksyon. Ang mga ito ay pinagmumula ng pagkalugi at pagkabaon sa utang ng maraming pamilyang magsasaka kabilang ang mga kababaihan. Hindi rin maikakailang epekto ng niliberal na mga proyekto tulad ng mga mega dam sa mga komunidad, sa kanayunan at kalunsuran. Kababaihan ang karaniwang biktima ng mga mapaminsalang epekto ng mga proyektong ito, lalo na sa panahon ng kalamidad. Nagdudulot ito ng malalang sitwasyon na lumabag sa karapatan at pumipinsala sa kababaihan kabilang kababaihan kanilang mga pamilya, komunidad at kabuhayan. Panghalawa, tuloy ang ating pagtindig para sa kalayaan at katarungan para sa lahat. Ayon sa Human Rights Group na karapatan, ang karapatan sa buhay ang isa sa pinakanilalabag na karapatan sa Pilipinas. Nakapagtala ang karapatan ng 316 na biktima ng ilegal at arbitraryong pag-aresto. 22,391 na biktima ng pambobomba, 39,769 na biktima ng indiscriminate firing, 24,670 na biktima ng forced evacuations, 552 na biktima ng forced surrender, at 1,609,496 na biktima ng mga pagbabanta, panliligalig at intimidasyon kasama na ang red tagging. Daan-daan rin ang humaharap sa mga gawa-gawang kaso kasama na ang 795 na bilanggong politikal. Labing piturito ay mga peace consultants ng National Democratic Front of the Philippines or NDFP. Ginagamit rin ang anti-terror law upang supilin ang boses ng mamamayan at madiskareil ang gawaing pangkarapatang pantao. Gayun din ang development at humanitarian work. Na isisiwalat ng paggamit ng mga draconian na batas tulad nito para tapakan ang mga batayang kalayaan ng mamamayan. Halimbawa na ang maling designasyon ng mga peace consultants at negotiators, pati na ang mga community at indigenous peoples leaders, gayun din ang paggamit ng anti-terror law para sampahan ang mga gawa-gawang kaso ang mga human rights defenders at expose the weaponization of these laws to violate the people's constitutional rights. Ayon naman sa Center for Women's Resources, mayroong 12 na biktima ng enforced disappearances sa ilalim ng kasalukuyang administrasyon. Lima rito ay mga kababaihan na sina Deia Lopez, Lean Grace Martolinas, Elgin Mongkal, Maria Elena Pamposa at Elizabeth Magbanwa. Dapat nangbuwagin ang NTFLCAC na hindi tumutugon sa mga ugat ng armadong tunggalian sa bansa at nagpapalalapa ng sitwasyon sa paggamit nito ng militarista at madugong pamamaraan. Hinding-hindi mapagtatakpan ang kahit anong rebranding ang kaugnay nitong libo-libong paglabag sa karapatang pantao at International Humanitarian Law. Bukod pa sa pondok ng NTFLCAC na nanatili ang bilyon-bilyong confidential and intelligence funds at limpak-limpak na nilalaan para sa militaristang hakbang sa halip na gamitin para sa serbisyon pampubliko. Ang mga militaristang polisiya na mga ito ay dikna ng Estados Unidos sa pamagitan ng ayudang military at mga iskema ng pangihimasok nito tulad ng War of Aggression ng US laban sa mga palestino. Habang nagpapatuloy ang laban para sa hustisia at pananagutan, mahalaga rin ang ating partisipasyon sa pagtutulak ng mga hakbang para isulong ang makatarungan at pangmatagalang kapayapaan na lumulutas sa mga ugat na kadahilanan ng armadong tunggalian. Sa panawagan para sa resamshon ng Peace Talks, kailangan ritong paggampan sa malinaw na obligasyon ng pamahalaan sa pagkilala at pagpapatibay ng mga dati ng kasunduan sa pagitan ng gobyerno ng Government of the Republic of the Philippines at ng NDFP tulad ng Comprehensive Agreement on Respect for Human Rights and International Humanitarian Law or CARIL. Bilang pagtatapos sa paggunitan ng International Human Rights Day, sama-sama tayong tumindig at kumilos para sa ating karapatan na labanan ang panunupil, tiraniya at mga digmaan ng agresyon. Ang Gabriela Women's Party ay patuloy na tumitindig kasama ng sambayan ng Pilipino para sa karapatan, dignidad, kalayaan at katarungan para sa lahat. Stop the attacks, defend the defenders, mabuhay ang lahat ng mga tumitindig para sa karapatang pantao. Maraming salamat, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we refer the speech of the Honorable Arlene Brosas to the Committee on Rules for its appropriate action.
Is there any objection? Chair here's sound. Motion's approved. The speech of the Honorable Brosas is referred to the Rules Committee. Please proceed, Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we terminate the privilege hour.
Is there any objection? Chair here's sound. Motion's approved. The privilege hour is hereby terminated. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we suspend session for a few minutes.
Session suspended. Session suspended.
...
Hello, Bonjour. Bye. Alors, bonjour. Alors, bonjour. Yeah. I'm not sure. Wait. Good. Thank you very much. Hey. Je ne vous en ai dit. Where is that? You can find it. Ah. Okay. Okay. Then we will begin.
That... Ooh. Yeah. Great, great. Sorry. Four months.
And next. A bar.
I see, okay. I must say, paragid. Ah. Malakin na, ako's mackerel.
Kailangan ano eh, kailangan magadid.
Oh, you can't.
You can't, bulsa, and maabot mo.
Malamang, pinagawa niya talaga. Gadju parang malaki.
Malawat. Sabid.
Separate. Black rider. I'm not trying to stop.
But you know it's... Sabid. I'm waiting. That's...
Hey. Hey, talaga.
I... I...
D- d- few... I...
Eli na.
Sate mo the problema.
Ah.
Now there's... This big. I'll be... Funny thing. That's right.
Ah.
Ah. Pading. Pading.
See.
Ah. How do I get there? I don't know how to get there. How do they sound? Then why was I...
Then I...
How to do it? I need you.
Ah.
Ah. Ah.
That's a...
Why you go down? Why you go down? Ah. Got this. You don't need to go to the... You know? Ah. Yeah.
I believe...
How long? Ah, yeah, but... Somebody else... Somebody else picture.
That's a...
Oh, damn it! Please, sir, my band of... The boy. Ah. Sure.
Be your partner, and I see you. Oh, yeah.
Ah. Bro. Ha, ni kumita. Hm.
Session is resumed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we take up additional reference of business and may request the Secretary General read the title of the measures.
The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the measures. Please proceed.
Additional reference of business. Committee reports. Committee Report Number 912 submitted by the Committee on Aquaculture and Fisheries Resources and the Committee on Appropriations on House Bill Number 9705. Committee Report Number 913 submitted by the Committee on Aquaculture and Fisheries Resources and the Committee on Appropriations on House Bill Number 9706. Committee Report Number 914 submitted by the Committee on Aquaculture and Fisheries Resources and the Committee on Appropriations on House Bill Number 7601. Committee Report Number 915 submitted by the Committee on Aquaculture and Fisheries Resources and the Committee on Appropriations on House Bill Number 9707. Committee Report Number 916 submitted by the Committee on Aquaculture and Fisheries Resources and the Committee on Appropriations on House Bill Number 9708. Committee Report Number 917 submitted by the Committee on Aquaculture and Fisheries Resources and the Committee on Appropriations on House Bill Number 9709. Committee Report Number 918 submitted by the Committee on National Defense and Security on House Bill Number 9713. Committee Report Number 919 submitted by the Committee on Legislative Franchises on House Resolution Number 1499.
The aforementioned committee reports are all referred to the committee rules.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the guests of the Honorable Congressman Nico Norbyones of Agapartilis, namely Mr. Rolando Tambago, Mr. Eric Harina, Ms. Anna Uy, Mr. Edwin Makasait, Mr. Michael Lescano, Kapitan Jaime Dalangin, Captain Ronnie Britannia, Mr. Leo Padwa, and Ms. Marisol Britannia.
The guests of the Honorable Biones from Agapartilis and my fellow Kababayan are welcome to the House of Representatives. Most welcome. Thank you. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, under the calendar of business for the day, I move that we consider House Resolution 1499 as contained in Committee Report Number 919.
Is there any objection? Chair Herson, motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we... Furthermore, I move that we request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the said House Resolution.
The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the resolution. Please proceed.
House Resolution 1499. Resolution urging the National Telecommunications Commission to suspend the operations of Suarezug Media Corporation, operating under the business name Sunshine Media Network International, for violating the terms and conditions of its franchise under Republic Act Number 11422.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? Chair Herson, motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we adopt the amendments as contained in the Committee Report Number 919.
Is there any objection? Chair Herson, motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we adopt House Resolution Number 1499 as amended.
Is there any objection? Chair Herson, motion is approved. House Resolution 1499 is hereby adopted. Please proceed.
Mr. Speaker, we are in receipt of the Bi-Cameral Conference Committee Report on the disagreeing votes on House Bill Number 8980, the Fiscal Year 2024 General Appropriations Bill. Mr. Speaker, in accordance with our rules, I move that we ratify the said Bi-Cameral Conference Committee Report.
Yes, for those who are in favor of the Bi-Cameral Conference Committee Report on the disagreeing votes on House Bill Number 8980, the Fiscal Year 2024 General Appropriations Bill, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, please say nay. The ayes have it. The Conference Committee Report on the disagreeing votes on House Bill Number 8980, the Fiscal Year 2024 General Appropriations Bill, is hereby adopted. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, may we recognize Honorable Arlene Brosas for a manifestation.
The Honorable Brosas is recognized for a manifestation. Please proceed.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, this representation would like to register our opposition to the ratification of the highly controversial 2024 budget. While the House of Representatives rightfully removed the confidential funds lodged in the office of the Vice President, the Department of Education, and other agencies, these are not only the issues... These are not the only issues hounding this huge 5.768 trillion national budget. Mr. Speaker, tinitiyak ng pambansang budget na ito ang pondong para sa pandarahas, kickback sa mga proyektong pang-imprestraktura, standby pork, at pambayad utang. Samantala, todong binarat ang alokasyon para sa direktang serbisyon panglipunan at mga programang pantulong sa mga Pilipino sa kabila ng nagtataasang presyo ng pagkain, utilidad, at batayang serbisyo. Maglalaan ng dambohalang budget, the 1.4 trillion, para sa Build Better More Programang Pangimprestraktura ni Marcos Jr., pero kung sisilipin, pangunahing makikinabang sa mga programang pang-imprestraktura ay mga malalaking kontraktor na konektado sa ilang opisyal ng gobyerno. Korap na politiko gayon din ang mga dayuhan kasosyo at bangko na magpapautang ng pondong. Wala ngang pondong ang gobyernong ito para sa pabahay at wala ring sapat ng pondong para sa pampagawa ng mga eskwelahat. Pero tinodo ang paglaan, paglalaan para sa mga big ticket projects na hindi matapos-tapos. Mr. Speaker, this national budget can't even address one of the biggest problems in our country: food security and subsidy to rice farmers. Lumalabas na walang pagbabago sa budget ng National Food Authority, NFA, para sa buffer stocking program nito. Samantala, bilyon-bilyon naman ang unprogrammed funds sa susunod na taon. Tumalon po ulit siya ng 7 billion ngayon para sa unprogrammed funds. Sa susunod na taon, na sa esensya ay... Tingin po namin ay standby pork barrel ng pangulo kabila ng suporta for infrastructure program and social program na karaniwang pondong para sa korapsyon. Popondohan ng unprogrammed funds ng sobrang koleksyon ng buwis at karagdagang utang at hindi ito sinasaklaw ng pagsusuri ng Commission on Audit o COA. Sa kabila ng matinding oposisyon mula sa mga mamayan, hindi tinanggal ang limpak-limpak na pork barrel na nasa direktang pasya ng pangulo at Department of Budget and Management. Sa katunayan, lumobo po ito sa taong 2024. Pinalobo ang travel allowance ng mga public officials pero kinaltasan naman ang repatriation programs para sa mga migranteng Pilipino. Binawasan pa nga ang pondong na may kinalaman sa repatriation ng mga migranteng Pilipino kahit lumalala ang krisis at instabilidad sa maraming bansa tulad ng nangyayari ngayon sa Israel. Bumuho sa Palestina. Bumuho din ang pondong para sa gera sa 2024 national budget. Ang pera ng taong bayan gagamitin para pondohan ng pagpapatayo at pagbimentinan ng mga base militar ng US sa iba't-ibang bahagi ng bansa sa ilalim ng EDA, Enhanced Defense Cooperation Agreement. Kung susumahin ang EDA-related construction projects under the TICAS program, aabot ng bilyon-bilyon. Ang gastos ng gobyerno nagbuho-sang gobyerno ng pera para sa base militar ng US kahit wala naman tayong mapapala rito. Sa harap ng mababang pasahod, nagtataasang presyo ng mga bilhin at serbisyo, mataas na implasyon, kawalan ng trabaho, at pagbulusok ng sitwasyong pangekonomiya. Malinaw na binarat ang budget para sa serbisyo at pagbangon ng ekonomiya, habang pinalobo ang budget para sa gera, imprestraktura, korapsyon, at pambayad utang. Maraming salamat, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Franz Castro for a manifestation.
The Honorable Castro is recognized.
Maraming salamat. Maraming salamat, ginong speaker. Magandang hapon po sa ating lahat. Kaakaaproba pa lang ng BiCam kanina ay niratify na agad ng House of Representatives ang BiCam report. Ni hindi man lang nakita ng mga kinatawan dito sa mababang kapulungan ang detalye at pinagbubutohan na natin iratify ang amendments sa GAB 2024 ng Bi-Cameral Committee. Kapos ang panahon ano para ma-scoridize itong Bi-Cameral Conference Committee Report. May maliit na napagtagumpayahan. Alimbawa, 'yung pagbabawas sa pondong ng barangay development program ng NTFLK mula 8.64 billion patungong 2.16 billion. At ang pagtatanggal at pagbabawas ng confidential funds sa OVP, sa DEP Ed, sa DA, DICT, at iba pa. Mumong dagdag na naman at kapos na budget para sa edukasyon. Sa kabila ng classroom shortage at napakalaking class size, 100 million pesos para sa basic education facilities at 6.5 million pesos para sa improvement and acquisition of school sites lamang ay dinagdag ng Kongreso sa panukalang budget ng executive. Puro Band-Aid solutions kagaya ng AIX, MAIP, at TUPAD ang dinagdagan ng budget. Dagdag pa rito ilan sa mga komento ng kinatawang ito na nakita natin sa pidav copy ng Conference Committee Report ang mga sumusunod. Una, kwestionable ang ginawang pag-exempt ng procurement sa revised AFP modernization sa Government Procurement Act. Pangalawa, tinututula ng kinatawang ito ang pagdaragdag ng fund sources ng unprogrammed appropriations. Tinalakay at tinutula natin ito sa prenario noong katapusan ng Nobyembre ngunit isisingit lang pala ito sa Bi-Cameral Conference. Pangatlo, sa halip na ibalik ang binawas ng Kongreso na 70 billion na miscellaneous personal benefits fund. Particular ang pondong para sa salary increase ng mga government employees. Binawasan pa ang pondong para sa payment of personal benefits. Mula sa 135.434 billion pesos sa NEP, bumaba ito sa 65.434 billion sa GAB house version at lumagapak ito sa 29.377 billion sa Bi-Cameral Conference Report. Paano na lang ang salary increase ng ating mga government employees by next year? Pang apat, imbis na bigyan ng siguradong pondong ay inilagay sa unprogrammed funds ang pondong para sa payment of personal benefits and pension and gratuity ng mga government employees. Pang lima, sublay ang provision and quote "The provision of confidential and intelligence funds to civilian governments, departments, and agencies will no mandate to perform security and intelligence-related functions unless the President certifies as to the extreme necessity thereof." Madaling sabi, pwede ng magkaroon ng confidential and intelligence funds ang isang ahensyang wala namang kinalaman sa security and intelligence-related functions basta masertify lang ng presidente na extreme necessity ito. Kung ating matatandaan, nakakuha ang OBP ng approval mula sa OP para makakuha ng 125 million confidential funds noong 2022, kahit wala naman ito sa gaa. Naghain ng makabayan black na petition sa Supreme Court para idiklarang unconstitucionalang paghingi, pagtangga, paggamit ng 125 million pesos confidential fund ng OBP noong 2022. Kasama ang pag-aproba nito ng pangulo para sa ginawang amyenda ng Bi-Cameral ay kabaliktaran ito. Taliwas ito sa panawagan ng ating taong bayan, Mr. Speaker, na abolish confidential funds. Na nanatili ang katangian ng pambansang budget kapos para sa pagkain, trabaho, at serbisyo para sa mga mamayan, samantalang dinadagdagan ng budget para sa pasismo, korapsyon, interes ng dayuhan, at pambansang utang. Tuloy po ang panawagan para sa pag-abolish ng confidential funds. Marami salamat, ginong speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no other business left for the day, I move that we suspend session until tomorrow, December 12 at 3:00 PM.
Session is suspended until December 12, 3:00 PM.